Executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the certification of executive session. Mr. Ball?
Madam Chair, I move that we went into executive session to discuss matters 2.2-3711A1 personnel, 2.2-3711A7 consultation with legal counsel, 2.2-3711A8 consultation with legal counsel in general.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Okay. And we'll stand for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like a moment of silence this evening for a secretary of copper group, which passed suddenly this weekend. We need to remember that family and that community.
Ms. Cindy Lester.
Yes, Cindy Lester. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Would anyone like to address the board tonight?
Let's bow our hearts toward prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for, again, the opportunity to be out tonight and the freedom to be able to do the county's business and take part in it. We just thank you for those that are being honored tonight and ask that you bless their future endeavors. Again, as was just said, be with the Copper Creek family and let them rally around each other and know that you're there in the midst of them. We thank you and praise you for all. Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay. Dr. Hooker, is there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am, there's one under the consent agenda, disciplinary committee appointment.
We'll do that later, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Yes, I would like to ask Ms. McCoy to please come forward for our recognitions tonight. We have a lot, as you can see, of celebrations.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Russell County School Board. I'm glad to be here today and see her to recognize all these students from each high school. And we are going to start with Homemaker High School. So, Mr. Bush could come forward. And we are going to begin with All-State Girls Basketball Class 1 First Team. Elena McNulty, parents, Mr. and Mrs. Steve McNulty. And Taylor Nolly, parents, Mr. and Mrs. Travis Nolly. And Coach Misty Miller. Could she come forward?
Ms. Bush?
Well, the family's not here, but these two girls are just like sisters, so I'd like to give a look at them. I'd like to thank the board for recognizing both Elena and Taylor for making the first team in All-State Girls Basketball. They were an instrumental part of our team for several years now. And Taylor will be with them when we be live and play basketball there where she did the scholarship, so I'd give her a hand through that. Elena, we're part of this year's team that made it to Final Four State, lost to the state championship Eastside Spartans, which is a very good team. So, I congratulate both of them on a great season, a great accomplishment on making the first team in All-State Class 1 Girls Basketball. Congratulations.
Elena McNulty. In recognition of winning the VHSL Class 1 All-State Girls Basketball First Team. Congratulations. Ms. Taylor Nolly. In recognition of winning the VHSL Class 1 All-State Girls Basketball First Team. Congratulations. Our next recognition from Homemaker High School is the All-State Boys Basketball Class 1 First Team, and that is Keaton King, parents Gerald and Amanda King. Coach Waylon Hart. You'll come forward. Mr. Hart, we'll let you speak first.
It'd be a lot easier, a lot easier job coaching if you had more kids like Keaton. He did a heck of a year. What's the most impressive part about him, I guess, is his unselfishness. Most players as skilled and talented as him would average 25 or 30 and shot the ball bust this year, but, you know, we're encouraging them to shoot the ball more. Most players that are as good as he is, you don't have to encourage them to shoot. They got that on their own. But he's just had a tremendous year, and we were very blessed to have him, and a big part of our success is through him.
Mr. Bush?
Well, I'd like to thank Keaton. He's outstanding young man as well as athlete. When he came to Homemaker, you know, we were really excited about having him back at Homemaker High School. And I do know there's one other person here in this room that thanks a lot of Keaton, and that's Mr. Potts back here. And so I asked Mr. Potts, he like said a word, keep wording about Keaton.
Coach Hart said it all. He's a great kid. He's the best. We miss him terribly, but we're glad he had a lot of success this year. He's everything that anybody could want him to be, no matter where he's at, as long as he's in Russell County, right?
Keaton King, in recognition of winning the VHSL Class 1 All-State Boys Basketball First Team. Our next recognition for Homemaker High School is the Allstate Forensics winner. That is Olivia Hale, and her parents are Potts, Jennifer Hale and Coach Hannah Thomas. They'll come forward. Ms. Thomas, if you'd like to say a few words?
I would like to thank the board for allowing me to honor Olivia and all of her accomplishments. I, for one, am so proud to be her coach. She has worked so hard. She won third place in extemporaneous speaking, which is very brave to do. Not many people are brave enough to do this category, because I would argue it is the hardest one. She does a lot of research and work behind it, and then she comes up on competition day and is given a topic in which she forms a speech within 30 minutes and gives that in a segment. And she has just overdone every obstacle and kept her ahead of time. I'm so proud of her.
I'd also like to thank the board, Dr. Hooker, and McCoy for recognizing Olivia. That's quite an accomplishment. And I'd also like to congratulate Leaven High School for their state championship team. I've done that for three years now, and I think we've got a good thing going here in Russell County with not only our athletic teams, but also our acting team. So, congratulations to Leaven High School, and certainly congratulations to Olivia.
Olivia Hale, in recognition of state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 1 Third Place, extemporaneous. Did I say that right? Okay, our next group is from Castlewood High School. Our state forensics winners coached by Chandra Booker. So, if Mr. Sparks would come forward along with the coach, Chandra Booker, and Heath Kaiser, parents Jamie and Heather Kaiser, Stephen Somerville, Jacob and Cindy Somerville, Stormy Odom, parents Missy Bellamy, Kaitlyn Sanders, Roy and Mercedes Sanders, and Candace, Jocelyn Phillips, parents Ronnie and Jessica Phillips, and Isabel Stanley, Andrew and Andrea Stanley.
Here's Mr. Sanders here tonight. He's here for Mr. Sparks.
Okay, if you'd like to say a few words?
On behalf of Castlewood High School and all of its stakeholders, I want to congratulate all the student athletes and competitors from Russell County. Congratulations to all, especially our Castlewood Blue Devil Forensics team. On my trips around the hallway, I watched them practice with their classmates, and it was a real joy for me to see how they gained the respect with their classmates, and they said were very attentive and kind of rallied around the forensic team. I really liked how, you know, they really taught those kids how to respect, you know, getting up and performing and standing in front of people and talking. That's one of the hardest things to do. I'm kind of nervous myself right now. But I want to miss seeing them practicing in the hallway. But at this time, I'll turn it over to the student.
I'm very proud of the two that are here and others that couldn't be here or not for, they had other conflicts. But this was my first year, and they've made it very, very pleasant and very much a blessing to have them here.
Candace Sanders. In recognition of state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class Third Place, serious duo interpretation. Congratulations. Mr. Heath Kaiser. In recognition of state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 1 State Runner-Up Humorous Interpretation.
Have your hands with the board to see you. Proud to see you. Congratulations.
We're up here trying to figure out where we're going to start with lips.
Our next group, of course, is our Class 2 VHSL Forensics State Championship Team from Leaven High School. I'm going to call each member and their parents. Please forgive me if I leave any wiles. Caitlin Mullins, Emery Mullins' parent. Emmett Breedy, parents Preston and Crystal Breedy. Landon Owens, Alicia, Lisa, Alicia Nichols. Brianna Potts, Ryan Potts. Emma Martin, Stephanie Martin. Carter Dillon, Brian and Rivers Dillon. Cheyenne Ball, Randall and Rhonda Ball. Chloe Dillon, Brian and Rivers Dillon. Katie Cole, Sharon Tatum. Kendra Horn, Elizabeth Leslie. Marley Bush, Justin and Hope Fields. Megan Hilton, Jonas and Melena Hilton. Haley Stiltner, Keith and Jaclyn Stiltner. Kaylee Salt. Charles Salt. Shaylan Gilbert, Tina Gilbert. Abby Amos, Jeff and Angie Amos. Macy Ferguson, Brian and Adrian Ferguson. Lily Garrett, Chris and Willis Garrett. Autumn Bridman, Felicia Bridman. And Timothy and Joyce Adams. And Coach Sarah Stoops, as well as Principal Ryan Potts. Chris Stoops.
Hi. Well, we want to thank the school board so much for recognizing these awesome group of students. And, you know, we went into this season really unsure about what exactly was going to happen. You know, we've had really good success the last two years, but we moved up to Class 2. And I told my kids, I said, you know, you all are fantastic, but 2 is not planned. They are very, they are a hard group. And we, they worked really hard. Their dedication, a lot of people don't realize that forensic students work basically just as much as any sports team. These kids are in my room every day after school for a couple hours every day from January on, and they work a lot at home as well. And so, we, they worked really, really hard, and it paid off. Because we went into the first round with Y.Central, who I knew was going to be a really tough adversary. We knocked them out. We went into the second round with Bradford, who are the defending state champions in Class 2. We took them out. So, when we went to state, I told them, I was like, you guys got it. You can do it. And they did. They went and they performed, and they just did really, really amazing things. And they're just great people, so they deserve it, and they worked really, really hard. And I'm really proud of this group, so.
Yeah, to build on what Mr. Bush and Mr. Sanders said, you can tell that we have a really strong forensics program in Russell County. All three schools had a lot of success in forensics, which I think is great, because as Mr. Sanders said, public speaking is really hard. And, you know, to be able to get up in front of people and speak is something that I think everybody has struggled with at some point in time. I'm still struggling with it sometimes. But these kids represented our school in a tremendous manner. We're really excited. The students kind of left it out, but I've been kind of giving her a hard time all year that she's got to repeat. She's got to, she's got to catch Mr. Hooker. He tied her with two in a row, so now she had to move ahead of him with three. But, and again, Bradford, I mean, everybody, Bradford was dominant last year in the 2A State Forensics. So, for us to go up there and compete with them and win this title was really impressive. We're very proud of them. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Sarah Stoops. In recognition of outstanding achievement in winning the 2024 VHSL Class 2 State Forensics Championship. And this is a plaque for the school. Mr. Emmett Breedy. In recognition of the state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 State Champion and Prompted Speaking. And also, this is your state plaque for winning state. Thank you. Landon Owens. I'll give that a word as your state flag. In recognition of state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 State Champion, extemporaneous speaking. Caitlin Mullins. Take that, Caitlin, your state. In recognition of state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 State Champion in Poetry. Brianna?
She's working. She's good for me, but she's not. Thank you.
Emma Martin?
She couldn't be here, she had a failing pregnancy.
Okay. I know I saw Carter.
Yeah.
Carter Dillon. There you go, Carter. State Forensics, 2023 VHSL Group 1A State Runner-Up in Serious Duo. Cheyenne Ball. I know I saw Chloe Dillon. State Forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 Third Place, Serious Dramatic Interpretation. Is it Katie Cole? Katie Cole? Katie? Hard to type that in. Katie Cole, State Forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 Third Place, Storytelling. Kendra Horn. State Forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 Third Place, Humorous Interpretation. Marley Bush. State Forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 Third Place, Pros. Megan Hilton? Megan? Megan? Megan, this is in recognition of state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 Fourth Place in Original Oratory. Haley Stiltner. In recognition of state forensics, 2024 VHSL Class 2 Fifth Place and Prompted. Kaylee Salt. Congratulations. These are state championship plaques. Abby Amos. Macy Ferguson. Lily Garrett. Autumn Bridman. And Shaylan Gilbert. Let's give this group another big hand. Our group, last group from Leaven High School are state winners from the, you know, Class 2A, or Class 2 All-State Winners. And there were Derek Mitchell and Eli Taylor. Parents, I don't have the names, so if you'll come forward as well. And Coach Travis Hooker. Coach Hooker, if you'll say a few words?
Again, you know, like everybody said, thanks, thanks everybody for your support. I've been lucky to sit up with these boys a lot, you know, between outdoor track, indoor track, and cross-country. Again, you know, indoor track's where there's one and two, so it's a big field. Really proud of them. Everybody knows, everybody's heard all the stories about how they run and everything, you know. We've told those, we've told those a lot, but I've gotten really close with these boys, and, you know, I'm with them every day, and really going to miss them, but, you know, I'm really proud of them. We got one going to Mars Hill. We got one going to University of Tennessee in Chattanooga. You know, both really good students, both, both had great academic careers. But yeah, you know, to make Allstate into 1600, 83200 on both of them, really big accomplishments. They've been sent to PRs about every time they go out. So, you know, these competitions are tough. Everybody knows that. They're in the mix for it each time. So, you know, just really proud of them again for winning. Proud of them, you know, like, again, appreciate everybody's support. Couldn't do without them. We're going to miss them for sure, but, you know, they've been, they've been a good group. They've been getting good boys, and everybody in the school's got to seem to be successful, so hopefully carry it on. You know, whenever I have Derek Mitchell, Eli Taylor back, maybe we can have more up here. They set the tone for that, so really proud of them.
Yes, and to sort of piggyback on that as well, we appreciate Coach Hooker and what he's done at Leaven High School. He has a passion for running and track, and he's really sort of revived some of these sports, I mean, cross-country in particular, the last few years. But from then on out, we've had indoor track. We've had good representation in indoor track, as well as track in the spring. And it takes, you know, it takes a special person to put that forth of effort in, and we do appreciate Coach Hooker for the job he's done for that. And I can't say enough about these two young men. I mean, they're, they're fantastic young men. They represent our school in an amazing way. They represent our county in an amazing way. And we will miss them certainly, but we're also so proud of what they've accomplished and look forward to reading, I mean, it used to be the newspaper clippings. Now, you just got to go on ESPN app, but see how they did in, yeah, at Mars Hill and at UT Chattanooga. So, we're really looking forward, looking at that, guys. We appreciate you.
Derek Mitchell? In recognition of selection to the 2024 VHSL Class 2 Boys Indoor Track All-State Selection in the 1600 meters, eighth place. In recognition of selection to the Boys Indoor Track All-State 3200 meters, third place. Eli Taylor? In recognition of selection to the 2024 VHSL Class 2 Boys Indoor Track All-State Selection, 3200 meters, fifth place. In recognition of selection to the twenty twenty-four VHSL Class II Boys Indoor Track All-State Selection Thirty-two Hundred Meters, fifth place.
Okay, we have two more recognitions tonight. We'll start with our teacher of the month. And I would like to ask Ms. Terry Osburn from Swords Creek Elementary School along with, uh, Dr. Sechin. I'd like to read her nomination letter. So wonderful. As you look into the world of education, you'll come across certain teachers who seem to shine just a bit brighter than most. Teachers who seem to just have a greater impact and touch more lives than others. Some teachers become more involved in their trade and develop a passion for cultivating the necessary relationships amongst students and staff to ensure their prosperity. Terry Osburn is all of these things. She began teaching in the eighty-four, eighty-five school year, and I'm not saying what her age is. Somebody wrote that down. I don't know. She has reached year thirty-nine of her service. She began at Givens Elementary, where she worked for twelve years before moving to Swords Creek to teach math. For the last nine years, she's been in a tech lab at Swords Creek, perhaps the most suitable position because she now has access to provide her skilled teaching strategies, tactics, and methods to, to all her students, uh, all the grades, grade levels. However, her outreach does not stop with the children. Ms. Osburn serves as one of the most trusted mentors to multiple teachers and staff members of her school. They seek her counsel in times of hardship, look for her guidance in desperate measures to comply in her wisdom in times of uncertainty. She is so much more than just a teacher. She is the person who makes everyone around her better. She makes me better. She is now at a point in her career where she is teaching children of some of her former students and their family members. And invaluable foundational relationships spanning across generations. It hasn't been the classroom that has made the difference. It's been her. Ms. Osburn is a candle to the rest of us, consuming herself to the light of the way and the way for the rest of us. And we, Russell County, the community, the children, have been so fortunate to have her touch our lives.
This acknowledges that Terry Osburn Swords Creek Elementary School has been named Teacher of the Month. Congratulations.
She's a generational teacher. I'm happy for her to have this moment. She's not just a valid, a big part of the citizens we have in our school, but like I said, she's taught parents of the kids that she's teaching now, and she's a very important part of the community, and I'm very happy for her to have this moment. So thank you. I'm proud of you. I love you. Uh, you mean a lot to the school, to education, and we know a lot to me as a leader of Swords Creek, isn't it? She told me, I thought before I left the building, I said, I'm gonna tell on you. She said, go right ahead. I'll tell on you. Keep it short, but congratulations.
And our last recognition for tonight is for Employee of the Month. And that honor goes to Ms. Linda Rainey. She is Special Education A at Castle Hill Elementary School. She would come forward and... I'd like to read the Miss Forens nomination, uh, for Employee of the Month. Miss Rainey deserves to be recognized as Support employee of the Month for several reasons. Miss Rainey is always on time and fully engaged with her students in the lessons or activities taking place in the classroom. She maintains a positive attitude and is always active in upholding the mission and vision of Castle Hill Elementary and Russell County Public Schools. I sincerely appreciate all of her hard work and dedication. So congratulations, Miss Rainey.
I was extremely happy when I found out we were being honored. I cannot think of anybody, um, that deserves it more than her. She does anything that we ask her to do. She does it with a smile on her face. The amount of care that she has for her children is just, it's unbelievable from making sure that they have baskets for egg hunt to making individual binders for kids, making sure they pass this well, and really benefiting that personal honor, so I'm extremely excited for her.
Linda Rainey Castlewood Elementary School has been named Support Staff Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe you skipped the approval of the minutes.
Minutes, yeah. We, we could do that. Do we have a motion that we spent some breathing of minutes in the briefing? All in favor? Got a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, I guess.
Down to the consent agenda.
Down to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion that we pay or reveal some accounts?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, do we, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, our approval of resignations and retirements. Do we have a motion on retirements and resignations? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, approval of new personnel and transfers? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Who did that? Thank you, Mr.?
Gibson.
Gibson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, it takes down to the disciplinary committee appointments.
Yes, and that's where you appoint three board members to the disciplinary committee.
Okay, thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Parsons, Ms. Perkins, and Mr. Ball if they would be our disciplinary committee appointments. Their point is? Thank you all. Okay, Dr. Hooker, request for the approval and second reading of your policies. Hang on one second. Okay? That's just the board representatives. Excuse me?
Your motion was for the disciplinary committee to be
Yes, from representing the
That's just the board's representatives?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just want clarification.
Yes, just the boards.
Do we need to go on and do that other now?
Uh, I think you're okay if you allow your superintendent to, uh,
I'll need time to do that.
To pick the four personnel.
We'll let her pick the other members. Okay, we ready for the policies? For the action items, yes ma'am. Uh, we do have more action items tonight. The first one is request approval of the second reading of policies.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? You may want to update us as to what those were. Okay, I don't have that in front of me exactly, so. It's back there, actually. I don't have it on this list. I didn't realize you were gonna... Oh, it's not on there? No. I can, I can talk about it, address it. For the days that are turned in for employees, when they retire, it will be capped at ninety-five dollars. Uh, that's one change. The second change is changing the retirement incentive from seven years to ten years in insurance incentive. And then the third one was that the, uh, retirement rescension cannot be, uh, turned in later than May the first.
And on the ten years, the last three?
The first seven years, you turn in twenty-five year, uh, twenty-five days per year, and then eight, nine, and ten, that's thirty days per year to equal to two hundred and sixty-five. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker, takes us to our CTE. Uh huh. Each school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia is required to have their annual CTE plan approved by their school board members before the plan can be submitted for approval by the state. The staff recommends the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five CTE annual plan be approved and submitted. Okay? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker? Our special. Yes, the same thing. Each year, the special education annual plan for each school division is to be provided to the school board members for the review and approval. Staff requests the approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five special education plan. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker. Okay, the last one, uh, number four, is the request of the approval of auction items, the auction that will be held this Saturday, at nine PM at the, uh, Bus Garage.
Nine AM.
Nine AM. I see you, nine AM. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Eaton. All in favor? Aye. Okay, I've got into the auction items, so I guess I better get out of there. Okay, Dr. Hooker, that dates from you? At this time, I have no updates, Madam Chair. Our sales tax. Click on that. Four hundred, I see, three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine seventy-three oh six, with our ADM of three thousand, one hundred and forty-five. Okay, we have our maintenance report. Any more member have any question? Expenditure report. Okay, Dr. Hooker, our future agenda items. Okay, um, we have our future calendar. Future calendar items. Okay, that is the VSVA Southwest Spring Regional Meeting in Washington County on April the thirtieth. And then Russell County Career Technology Center's Advisory Dinner will be made the second at six PM. How many do you have going to the spring forum? I have, uh, Ms. Compton and Ms. Garrett. Okay, Ms. Perkins, would anybody else like to go?
It's a very good informative meeting.
It's a VSVA meeting. It's at the Haver, the Hurry.
All the seven counties around the country there. That's where we take our
So four, okay, I can. So I guess at that point, we just I can register.
Register with him.
The other register, is it the one at the vote day?
Yes, the advisory dinner is at the vote day.
Is it the sixth or the?
It is the second, made the second, at six PM. The next school board meeting will be Tuesday, May the seventh. Executive session will be at five PM. Meeting will follow at six thirty PM. We appreciate our supervisor. Thank you for coming.
You have just been, or you gotta go?
Well, I don't think so, but what, what you?
I was gonna see if you wanna speak on the Isaiah House real quick. Okay. This is a great, a great thing that the county's doing, and, uh, just on a little bit on my side of it is I'd love to encourage anybody that wants to be a foster parent to get involved, because we need, we need foster parents, but Terry can speak on a little bit more if you don't care. I could put you on spot.
That's okay. I'm always ready to speak on that, for sure. So Isaiah One Seventeen House is, um, it's, it's a nice short stay home for when it's like for placement. The children go there, um, until we can find a foster home. They are loved on, as Isaiah House says, lavishly. So it's kind of like one of your momma's or your auntie and uncles, and you get, you know, the food you want. You get a couple little things. They also set up the future foster family. So, you know, a lot of times when foster families get a baby, for instance. You may foster older children, you haven't had a baby in the past, so you need diapers, you need formula. You need baby clothes. It might be in the middle of the night. You can't really just run out and get something. So Isaiah House will actually set up these children with a week's worth of clothes. If they go to school, their school supplies, things like that. We had our kickoff on Sunday. It was the largest kickoff that, well, one of the largest, but it was definitely the largest money raised of any Isaiah House kickoff. But we do have a shortage of foster parents. I encourage anybody. I know you all deal with foster children within the school system, and you know what a what an issue that we have with it. I think last we counted, there were seventy-four or seventy-six children. You know, that's a lot for our population. It really, really is. So anybody who's wanting to be, um, a foster care provider, please, you know, reach out to the SSS. But come out and support Isaiah One Seventeen House. Our next expansion meeting is April twentieth. And it's a little early, it's eight, eight-thirty AM, but everybody has kids in sports and whatnot right now. So we figured earlier was better. It's on Saturday. It'll be at LCF. Um, do you all have any questions or anything about it?
Well, something that I think this school should do is contact our principals and see if there's anything that we can do as far as like a drive for this, if it's diapers, um, things that they may need, if we can contact with them and see what they need. Some of the material items that may, may fit them best for what age groups that they're seeing, and I'm sure it's all across the spectrum.
Yeah, I mean, we're building a new house and, um, and it will be in Lincoln. The, the land is already donated. Everything's getting worked out for that. Um, the whole basement of it will be furnished with, you know, like I said, baby wipes, clothes, shoes, all those sorts of things. All the necessities that you're gonna need, um, to take in a foster child or, you know, sibling group. And, and we're talking beds, too. If you, if you have kids and you don't have twin beds, or you don't have a crib bed, we're gonna make that happen so that you can take these children and there's less of a burden on you for taking them, and there's a less, less of a burden on them. You know, they get nothing wrong in this situation. You know, they get nothing wrong in this situation. But we've got to make that transition easier. Right now, they're spending sometimes a night, sometimes three or four nights, sometimes a week at BSS in a room a lot less nice than this. It's very bland. It's very office-like. This will be a homestead. But that will be stocked with all the new stuff, so diapers, wipes, clothing.
Is that something that we can do?
That would be awesome. That really would.
If you can provide any information?
If you could give me information of items that you need. I mean, our schools do a lot of community service activities. So if you could give me the list of things that you would need, I can give those to the principals.
I absolutely can. Thank you so much.
So where are you located right now?
It will be in Leighton. Isaiah One Seventeen House was actually started in Tennessee, in Carter County.
I followed up with that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's so awesome. It's such a great, great ministry. But it will be in Leighton, probably, I don't know, three to five minutes from BSS, depending on all of our traffic.
When do you expect the house to be?
We should break ground in October. That's what we're looking at. And there are certain things that we have to get in line first as far as spending and things. They have certain requirements. But as of right now, projected October for breaking ground. And then, I don't know, I guess that depends probably on the weather, I guess. I don't know how the construction, I don't know how long that normally takes. But I think it's, I don't know, probably around two thousand square foot home.
Now, I know she spoke last night about needing upwards to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. There's an initial addition, or initial, sorry, seventy-five thousand, but then an extra that was like running costs. But, you know, it's interesting the way they were putting the motion. You know, you have certain donors and names. So, I mean, of course, nothing's easy, but we don't, at least with the community involvement thus far, we don't look to have an issue with that. So hopefully, everybody will...
Will they be volunteers or what?
They will be volunteers except for three positions. There will be one position that is... And then there are different parts of the positions. And I can't, they have special names for them. But then everybody else will be volunteered. So we're gonna need forty to fifty volunteers. And they will be trained CPR, trauma, that sort of thing, background check, of course. And let's say you can only do it one time in a month that's coming. You would sign up, say, for Thursday night. You can only be on call from like seven to ten. That's fine. We'll put you on that schedule. We may not have a kiddo show up, but we might. Same with through the night. So it doesn't wear anybody out if you have that many volunteers covering the whole night. And then, of course, you know, we have a spot, too, within the house specifically for the caseworker because right now, you know, they're trying to wrangle kiddos in an office as well as do all of the mountain paperwork. I mean, you know, it's tough. But they'll be within line of sight. We have a computer. We have printer. We have everything they need. If they're hungry, we feed them too. Yeah, any call. That's what we all...
You can just imagine what it's gonna do to these kids, mind, too, in that situation.
It really does. And if you listen to some of the stories, I mean, it's heartbreaking. But Isaiah House really, it sets that tone. It makes things easier. They're loved on. They're cared for. They're made to know that, you know, this is not your fault. You are not alone. You know, that's one of their big slogans. Love, you're not alone. And I just think that's such a beautiful, beautiful thing. Because what more does a kid need, you know? And that is one of the darkest things probably that they've ever had in their life, to be removed, you know? Rhonda Paulson, when she spoke Sunday, she talked about, you know, they're removed from their mama, maybe their mama and daddy. And while you may not agree with what mama and daddy have done, that child still loves them like that. And, you know, that's still traumatic, no matter what.
Well, as a school system, I believe we should do everything we can to help this group. So any information, and I mean, even if we can pass that information out to school, put it in the boxes or give it to the kids and send it home with the parents and see if there's anything that we can do to support them. I would be up for that.
And we can volunteer this.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And right now, if you all are interested, I guess I'll probably come back next meeting and bring in the signup sheet or whatever. And Kasia may want to speak. Like, she's outstanding for me.
She's welcome.
So I will let her know if maybe she can come and explain maybe a little bit more than I can and bring some different things for you guys to look at, signup sheets, et cetera, because, you know, maybe some of the audience and stuff. But it is a wonderful, wonderful industry. And if you all can at all support it, you know, even just talking to people about it, because it is going to do wonderful things in that community. I really believe that. And you start catching the step early with these kids as opposed to letting these generational curses move on and on and on. It's gonna make a difference, not just in Leighton, but in all of Russell County and all of Southwest Virginia, because we all see how that rolls on. You know, as educators, you see from one generation to the next. Because most of the time, you teach more than...
And something that I think is so important with this is it keeps our students here and it keeps them in our schools. Like, right now, some of these kids that get taken out, they're moving out of our schools and going on somewhere else, so...
Why not you? Because we don't have the foster home.
So this is not only supporting them, this is supporting ourselves. I mean, it's gonna help all the way around, so...
And you know, those kids, it's so traumatic. You could take it from mom and daddy and now you're gonna be taken from your friends, your teachers. You know, maybe the one teacher that you feel loved and safe around, but now you've got to move out of state. And it's just, it's heartbreaking. So it's a big problem, and it's not just a problem in Russell County. You know, we're not only facing drake issues, criminal abandonment, and things like that. But, you know, we are the heart of Southwest Virginia. And we really, really need to step up for our kiddos. And I know we can. So, do you have any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. I just got the tapes. I was like, I better go. But you can let us know.
I just thought it, Karen. I wanted to thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm gonna stay in Philly. And if y'all have any questions about our waivers, feel free to email me, call me, whatever, so, okay? And this is it. Thank you so much. See you later.
Okay. Who wants to do their motion for a German?
I'll make the motion.
Got a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?